All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our October 11 Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our roll, please.
Council members Baranco.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
McCurs.
Here.
Nightert.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
All right, before we give our invocation, just want to recognize Scout Pack 346 from St. Michael's Catholic Church. What's up, guys? Don't worry, we just solved a lot of problems out in the lobby before this, so thanks for being here. And we welcome back Pastor Charlie Moore with Sunny Crest United Methodist. Pastor Charlie, thanks for being back, man. He's going to give our invocation tonight, so please rise for that and stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us bow our heads and let us pray. Almighty Father, we thank you for your time to gather, the blessings we have to be able to gather and discuss and help a city grow and move. We ask that you fill us to be civil, to be caring, to be thoughtful, to be open-minded, and to hear the concerns of those and to hear the concerns of those leaders. It's in your gracious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks Pastor Moore for that. We'll move on to our approval of our consent agenda, item four. Any changes or motions there?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to place sub item 16 from the agenda item six on the regular agenda.
All right, so noted. Any other changes there? All right, if not, I take a motion to approve the consent agenda then.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, motion by, was that by Selberg?
Yes.
By Selberg, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there? All right, we'll vote on that, please.
Council members Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurs.
Yes.
Nightert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item 11, our regular agenda. Look for a motion to approve, please.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Jensen and seconded by Sale. Discussion there? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Council members Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurs.
Yes.
Nightert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Before we move on with our agenda, just want to review public input for our agenda items tonight. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For our regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only during general public input. At the end of the meeting, comments are limited to three minutes per person. With that being said, we'll move on to polled sub item 16.
Sub item 16 from the agenda item six, Transit Professional Services Agreement for Site Selection Study for Sioux Area Metro TSP, Inc., $94,600.
Counselor Starr.
Yes, I, let's do an explanation. Who's Sam?
All right.
Sam Tribillcock, City Planning and Development Services.
Awesome. Just give me a brief idea of what we're doing differently, because this is a new process, because we had planned to move forward with remodeling, and we definitely need to do some remodeling or some repair, at least in the current place. So, we changed our mind and are looking at multiple locations, potentially downtown.
Yeah, so really, this study is looking at potential sites to relocate the facility. You know, over time, as we've looked at that facility, it certainly seems like, number one, there's a lot of issues with the facility. Remodeling would take a lot of work. Also, as council noted even during the budget hearing, that site in itself could be used, we think, in different ways as development in the downtown area continues to take off. So, we think there might be higher and better uses for that site. So, this study is looking at the possibility. It's also looking at the current site. It's looking at five other sites to see what would work. There's quite a bit of work that needs to be done, including, you know, what would the cost be? You know, what would the cost be of maintaining a facility like that with the current, with the plans that we have to move forward with transit in Sioux Falls? And so, that's really what it's taking a look at. Plus, there's a lot of requirements that Federal Transit Administration requires as a part of an environmental process, this is in Title VI, and all that's rolled into this study.
If I can, Mr. Mayor.
You bet.
Where, how are we funding the consultant? Where's the money?
It's, it's, it's in the, it's coming out of the Transit Fund.
So, what was the money going to be used for before this part of it? Was this part of the overall plan, I guess, is the moving forward? I thought we were just moving with one location, but now that we're looking at multiple sites and...
This was part of the budget that was adopted by council. So, it wasn't any changes or anything like that. That was a part of this budget that was adopted, that you were adopted just a few weeks ago.
Thank you.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on this item?
Scott Erstman, Sioux Falls. Find it interesting that a few weeks ago, or a week ago or so, the news came out and said, "We're thinking about moving the bus barn," or "We're thinking about doing something with it." And now, Sam just said, "Oh, it was already in the budget that we were going to spend this $94,000." Kind of sounds like that there is some developer who's interested in the property. Whatever, that doesn't really matter. What I don't understand is, I don't know how many city employees there are, is it 1,200 or something? We have, we have a lot of city employees that could be doing this, looking for properties, looking at if they can remodel that thing. We know that's not going to happen. We know that we're just going to go build another facility. It's what really is going to happen. And I don't understand why we have to hire an architecture firm to look for an empty lot for us. Seems kind of crazy to me. I would think you hire an architecture firm to build it, to plan the building, once we've decided where we're going to put it and if we're going to do it. And we don't even know what a new facility is going to cost. So, I guess I'm a little confused as to how this was in the news just a week or two weeks ago, that this was just something that we were thinking about, but it was actually shoved into the budget. No one knew about it. And now, all of a sudden, tonight, we're told that, you know, it's, we planned on spending this money all along. Okay? Like I said, I don't care if you're looking for a new site for the bus barn or whatever. There's so many issues with transit, this is, this is the last thing on the list, to tell you the truth. I guess I've never thought that the issues we have with transit have anything to do with the bus barn, or that they're using one of their rooms to pile junk up in. I saw some pictures in the news. But that's what we really should be concentrating on. $94,000 can go a long ways in improving our transit system. And hiring an architecture firm to go look at empty lots and real estate is a waste of money. And I don't care if it's $94,000 or $900. It is a blatant waste of money. And I hope you vote it down, but you probably won't, because it's already in the budget. It's already on the consent agenda, you know? And I just think that with public transit, we have many, many, many issues. And to be throwing around this kind of money, you know, basically to hire a real estate agent to go look for stuff is kind of foolish.
Anyone else to speak on this tonight? All right, council, we have any questions here? Sam, additional questions, I should say? Look for a motion.
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen. Discussion there? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurs.
Yes.
Nightert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 12, first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations. Recommendation set as second reading for Monday, October 17, 2022. Sponsor, Mayor.
Sean, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So, the item before you is the first reading of a supplemental appropriation. It covers a number of different areas, a number of different departments. Some of these we knew would be coming down the pipeline, but we do try to hold them to kind of consolidate them, so we're not bringing forward supplementals on a regular basis here. The first item on there is related to plating fees coming in above budget. We typically, this time of year, if they're coming in above budget, will adjust for that and appropriate those. I'm going to let Andy Berg speak to those after I've concluded speaking on the other items that are here on the agenda, and then we can answer any questions that you have. Two of the main items are related to cost escalation. You might recall from some of the financial monthly updates that we provided, that the cost escalation for fuel and utilities is impacting some of our departments. Some are capable of absorbing that, others have tighter budgets. Two of those that are in front of you tonight are for fire, for $100,000. Parks and Recreation is $500,000, of which about $240,000 of that $500 is related to cost escalation. And just kind of give you a flavor of some of the impacts that we're having from this cost escalation. So, when we did the 2022 budget, we budgeted unleaded gas at $2.60 a gallon. We're averaging about $3.20, currently at $3.25, and expectations that that's going to remain elevated or could increase over time. We are projecting the $4 for the remainder of the year. On diesel prices, which has been even more impactful, we had budgeted at $2.85 a gallon. We're averaging $3.49, but currently, we're at $4.41 and estimating $4.50 to $4.75 for the remainder of the year. So, that's, that along with escalation in utilities, which I think everyone is experiencing, certainly is impacting some of those budgets. The other portions of the park and rec, as you're aware, we had some spring damages that occurred earlier in the year. And whether they're reimbursed or not, we do have to appropriate to make sure we have the expenses to encourage to do that. We will be reimbursed a portion of them, but only one of the three storms was actually merited a FEMA approval. And so, for that storm, we will be seeking reimbursements for the others. It will be direct impact to our general fund. The two other items that are before you, $400,000 for planning and development. This is directly related to the bid and the lodging tax. It's not a net impact overall to our general fund or budget, since all the funds are passed through to experience Sioux Falls. Those revenues have been coming in above budget. Bid is up 8%. That's driven more by occupancy, which is pretty steady right now. But lodging tax is up about 24% through this part of the year, and that is driven by the higher rates that are being experienced and being paid on a regular basis. And then, the last item is related to a police vehicle, special purpose vehicle, $70,000. This is grant funded. We actually have the grant funds available to us. We just need to appropriate the funds for this vehicle. Thank you. And then, I'll have Andy Berg speak to the plating fees.
All right, thanks, Sean. Andy, good evening.
Andy Berg, Public Works. Just a brief breakdown on the plat fees. The current budget for 2022 was shaded over $2.5 million for the arterial street plating fees. Year-to-date, we've collected $3.8 million, approximately 1.2 over, with another expected roughly $700,000 that we expect through the end of the year. So, we're bringing forward an amendment of $2 million of additional revenue to be expended with those arterial plating fees. The projects that those would be tagged for are the traffic signals planned at 33rd and Veterans Parkway and 41st and Line Drive Avenue. That involves lane, turning lane, the signals themselves, cameras, fiber optics, all that that go into a new signalized intersection. And those would be bid right after the first of the year. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Andy. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item?
Good evening. Chester DeYoung, Sioux Falls. I just had a lovely meeting with Mr. Berg this afternoon about traffic lights, in particular, traffic light at Taylor and Sycamore. He really wants to open up Grant Street this year, and yet, he has no way to accommodate the traffic flow that is going to come from it. So, I feel that if he really wants to open up another street with the amount of traffic that he is going to throw on the intersection of Taylor and Sycamore, that number should be reflected also. That is something that could be thrown in the 2023 budget if he wanted to. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight?
Scott Erstman, Sioux Falls. I just wonder if you guys could ask a question before you vote on this, because I'm just curious. There is a $500,000 appropriation in there for storm cleanup. We've been told, I don't see it, it was on the agenda earlier, so I don't know what's going on with that. But anyway, there's $500,000 for storm cleanup, so I'm just curious as to why we need that when we're repeatedly told that we get money from FEMA, we get reimbursements, we have people call the helpline center, tell them how the city come and picked up their stuff so that we can record this and get reimbursement. So, I'm just curious, I guess I understand that we need to come up with the money. It's just, it's kind of weird that we're coming up with $500,000 appropriation after the storm cleanup is already done. Maybe it's not all done, but I find it kind of weird that we're asking for a half million dollars now after the fact. It's been a while since this happened. So, I'm just curious, why has it taken so long to ask for appropriation? And then, number two, is the federal government or FEMA going to reimburse us for that, that money? It just seems kind of odd to me that we didn't ask for this money when the cleanup was going on, now we're asking for it. Like, we had the, in other words, we had the money to clean up the parks, but now we want more. So, I don't get it. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, council, you have any questions for Sean or Andy on these appropriations?
Move approval, Sale.
Second, Cole.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Cole. Is there discussion on that motion? And again, that's a set of data, second reading for Monday, October 17. Let's take a vote on it.
Counselors Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurs.
Yes.
Nightert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 13, please.
A first reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, establishing the tax increment revenues to be collected and authorizing the payment of tax increment revenues to Nielsen Development LLC in accordance with the Development Agreement for Tax Incremental District Number 26, city of Sioux Falls. Recommendation set a date, a second reading for Monday, October 17, 2022. Sponsor, Mayor.
Good evening, Dustin.
Good evening, council. Dustin Powers of Planning and Development Services. The item on your agenda tonight is related to Tax Increment Finance District Number 26 to support the development of accessible housing units in the city of Sioux Falls. Nielsen Development has proposed the project and has made the request for tax increment financing. The 2026 Housing Action Plan established by the Sioux Falls Accessible Housing Advisory Board laid out recommendations to help combat the accessible housing needs here in Sioux Falls. One of those such actions was to establish TIF guidelines to use to create more accessible housing units in the city. Accessible housing units for the purposes of tax increment financing in Sioux Falls is defined as the availability of single-family housing sold at a varied price points between 60% and 100% of the South Dakota First Time Homebuyer Program. The current homebuyer program price limit set by the South Dakota Housing Development Authority is $340,000. So, with tax increment financing that we're considering here tonight, targeting that 60% to 100% of that pricing, we're targeting homes between $204,000 and $340,000. The principles behind those guidelines were to target those various price points, as well as working within the housing market, and ultimately, creating accessible housing units that are integrated into the neighborhoods, instead of developing them on their own. So, when we look at the district here, the areas in orange and yellow were part of a rezone request that you previously had seen at previous meetings. This area is approximately 10 acres of land on the northeast side of Sioux Falls, located just north of Madison Street and east of Veterans Parkway. The project details for this are 65 single-family homes will be developed, 39 of those, which will be on single-family lots, and 26 of them will be on 13 twin-home lots. The pricing for all of these homes will be below the first-time homebuyer pricing set by the South Dakota Development Authority's First Time Homebuyer Pricing Program, which is important, because according to codified law, being below that first-time homebuyer pricing determines that it is affordable housing when we consider TIF. So, some of the project details, much of this information we've shared at a previous informational. There's three unit types. Unit type A is a 978-square-foot, single-family home, two bedrooms, one bath, one-stall garage. These will be slab-on-grade. The price would be at or below $232,000, which is 68% of the first-time homebuyer pricing. Unit type B is a 1,200-square-foot unit, slab-on-grade, single-family home, three bedrooms, two bath, one-stall garage. These would be priced at or below $308,000, which represents 90% of the first-time homebuyer pricing. And unit C is the twin-home concept, which would be two bedrooms, two bathrooms, with a two-stall garage, and does have a lower level unfinished, that would allow up to two bedrooms, one bathroom finished. The goal is for these to be priced at $323,000 or below, which again, is at 95% of the first-time homebuyer pricing. The image on your screen is just kind of an artist's rendering of the area once developed. We're looking towards the west, so in front of you, and the closest to you are the single-family homes, both unit types A and B. And then, in the background, you can see the twin-home concept, that unit type C that was just described. So, when we're considering TIF, there's a number of items that we're required to bring forward for consideration as city council. That'd be the district boundary, the project plan, and the development agreement. Tonight is a first reading, and final consideration of these is going to be on October 17. Before we go into the detail of the actual TIF, those three items, I wanted just to show this graph. This is a graph that we show typically when we're bringing TIFs forward, to just show the function of TIF. Tax increment is really the difference between the amount of property taxes generated from property within a district before the designation to what the property values and taxes will be generated after the designation of the district and the improvements have occurred. There's a base value set, so you can see on the screen, when the district's created, that baseline property value is set, and those taxes are continued to be collected and sent to the taxing entities. The area in the gray is the increment, so after the project occurs, we'll have more increment, and the increment is what is used to pay for the TIF request and the eligible improvements. So, when we look at the proposed tax increment district, when we look at the overall project, it's a $20 million development. There's a request for $2.14 million of TIF that will go through to eligible improvements, including site work, roads and infrastructure, utilities, and professional services. Following the development of the 65 homes, we estimate that the estimated taxes collected or increment that'll be collected as part of this TIF district is $300,000. That annual $300,000 is what goes down to pay down the tax increment debt associated with the request. So, first item is the TIF district. So, one of the items that'll be coming forward is a resolution to approve the Tax Increment Finance District and the boundaries. In order to consider designating boundaries for a TIF district, codified law says that not less than 25% of the property shall be considered blighted, or not less than 50% will go to support and stimulate the economic development and general welfare of the state. The resolution also must state that the area, all of, or the area will be enhanced significantly the value of all the property within the district. So, when we look at those two items related to the district, you know, when we look at housing in South Dakota communities, accessible housing supply is needed to create economic development in communities. All homes within this district will be sold below the first-time homebuyer pricing established by the South Dakota Housing Development Authority. The intent of this project is to create new accessible housing units and ownership opportunities to support the city's growth and efforts to support the Sioux Falls economy, which ultimately supports the general welfare of the state. More accessible housing units means our ability to retain jobs as well as create new jobs in Sioux Falls. So, we believe it meets the economic development definition. And then, ultimately, we've already talked about the enhancement of property valuation and taxes that'll be collected, so we believe it's significantly going to enhance the value of the district. The project plan is about an 18-page document that's also included in your information tonight. I won't go through all of the details of that, but there are a number of areas that we must address by South Dakota codified law, things like the types of improvements that'll be occurring within the district, the economic feasibility, so is the increment that's going to be collected enough to pay down the TIF, the detailed estimated project costs, fiscal impact on the taxing entities, as well as a description of the methods of financing. This is going to be a developer-funded TIF, which has been similar to most of the TIFs we've done in recent years in Sioux Falls. We must show maps of existing uses and conditions, maps showing the proposed improvements, showing any proposed zoning changes, which were already brought forward and for council's consideration, a statement that if there's any changes needed to our comprehensive plan or any other codes, there aren't any of those being proposed. What are the non-project costs of the construction of the homes are actually non-project costs that aren't eligible through TIF? And then, ultimately, we're not relocating any individuals as part of this. So, that's all addressed within the project plan. There'll be a resolution on the 17th to consider that item as well. And both of those items are attachment to the agreement that's on your agenda here tonight. So, just to look at a couple of those items, TIF eligible expenses, this is laid out in the project plan. As you can see, there's $3.9 million worth of eligible expenses identified within the TIF plan. The request is for the 2.14 plus the financing cost, which equates to about $3 million. So, we do have enough eligible expenses to support the request. When we look at total tax payments and the fiscal impact to the taxing entities, this is looking at year 2027, so this isn't too far out. This is really the first year of stabilization, once all the homes are probably completed. We'll see about $280,000 in a tax payment. You can see how that would be split across those taxing entities that are a part of this district. And ultimately, once the district is dissolved, all of this revenue would then go, not to pay down the TIF, but to pay those taxing entities that are on the screen. So, when we look at our TIF evaluation, focused on three main areas, typically, we look at the significance of the project, and really, in this case, the impact it's having on accessible housing units in Sioux Falls, the anticipated financial need based on the request, and the identified eligible expenses. After review of those, consideration for TIF is supported in those areas. More specifically, this project significantly adds accessible housing units to the city of Sioux Falls, which supports the several objectives that were included in the 2021 Housing Needs Assessment, as well as the 2026 Housing Action Plan. The TIF Development Agreement is the last item for consideration for council. This is a developer-funded TIF, as previously stated. The request is for the $2.14 million to go to those eligible improvements, plus the cost of financing, which will be capped at 5.2%. We do have a kind of a checkpoint within the TIF that any reimbursement over the $1.84 million, we'll have to relook at the project financials to make sure that there's still a project gap needed to support anything above that. So, it's essentially, we've written a $300,000 contingency within the TIF. If it's not needed, we won't reimburse it. Requirements of the developer is that all homes need to be constructed by May 1 of 2028. Sale prices are restricted to the numbers that were shared earlier. And then, ultimately, we are, as part of the development agreement, requiring Nielsen Development to record restrictive covenants on the property. Those covenants would restrict the future price for those homes for the next five years. It would restrict that it needs to be a primary residence, and that those homes could not be rented. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Kelly Nielsen's here with Nielsen Development, also to provide any feedback that you may need.
All right, thanks, Dustin. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight?
Scott Erstman, Sioux Falls. Before the election, we were told that we were working on a housing, accessible housing, affordable housing issue, and we were going to get something done after the election. Boy, was I surprised when we found out that we're building a housing development between Washington High School and Brandon, South Dakota. What was always talked about, and has been beaten over the head, is that we need to build more density in the core of our city. We already have programs in place, community development loans, fixing up cores, going into the core, and this is really where the affordable housing is. into the core, and this is really where the affordable housing is. Came out later that this project, oh, well, this isn't really supplying affordable housing, but the people who live in affordable housing now are going to move out of those places and buy these places, and that will open up housing for those places. Well, if you look at any kind of affordable housing in the core of our city, you will see that it's either owned by a landlord who doesn't want to sell it. It's empty. Sanford owns gobs and gobs of houses. I know that for a fact. What we need to focus on is the core and building density and not a housing development out wherever. I'm OK with the housing development, that's fine, but they should just do it privately. The TIF is confusing to me because if you look at TIFs, it actually is a tax break for a person receiving the TIF. The homeowners are going to be paying 100% of their property taxes on day one. They're not getting a TIF. Developer and the bank who's investing in this or giving the loans for this, they're the ones benefiting from the TIF, not the homeowner. So that's kind of foolish. And what always, always makes me kind of surprised when you guys start talking about TIFs, city staff comes up here, a lot of people come up here and talk about TIFs and how great they are and how beneficial they are, and, you know, they always tell us how they work and give us these slides and everything else. But there's never been a study in the state of South Dakota or in this city, ever, by an independent, by the colleges, universities, independent, or even a paid-for study by any entity in the state to tell us how TIFs are working. We have no idea if they're working. I don't think they are, but we've never had anybody study it. We just automatically assume that they work. We have, what is this, TIF 26? We have gobs and gobs of TIFs floating out there still. We have no idea if they're working or not. Like I said, great development, but it should be private. The city should just give permits and let them do whatever they want to.
Anyone else here to speak tonight on this?
Chester DeYoung, Sioux Falls. I was taking a look at his financials. He had $200, $2.8 million or something like that. When you take a look at where the money was going, over half of it was going to the Brandon Valley School District. And yet, they're coming to the city of Sioux Falls to support something that's going to send over half of the money from it to a different school district, not even inside our own town? Why is Sioux Falls supporting something that's supporting another town? Get real. That money should be inside the city limits, not outside. That's a Brandon Valley School District issue. Thank you.
The Brandon District's in Sioux Falls. Is there any other questions or public input on this? Good evening.
Hi, my name's Brenda Lawrence, and I guess my biggest issue is if these houses are about 900 square feet and they're $200,000, is that really a deal? I mean, I wouldn't pay that much money for that small of a house. And if you look at a lot of the housing that's here that's being built, it's generally a two-car, three-car garage. So you're going to get these people into these little homes, and then they're not going to want to stay in them. Are they going to be able to sell them for what they bought them for? Who's going to pay that kind of money for these homes? And that's kind of confusing to me, who, you know? And then some of the homes are well over $200,000. And with the housing market going to be falling apart shortly, then those people are really going to be in a bind. So I don't know if you're trying to get people to be put into a bind, or if you're really trying to help people. But I wouldn't suggest building something so small. And if you have low-income people, they generally have more than one child, and these are two-bedroom places, so I don't know who you're trying to market this to, but that's kind of my big issue with this. Thank you.
Good evening.
Greetings, council. Brian Burge, Ryan for District 16 Senate out of Beersford, South Dakota, Turner County Union. Reason I'm here today is, one, to touch a little bit on principle. Beware of what you guys are signing off for with this particular TIF. Not only are you, because it's underneath an affordable housing TIF underneath the funding for state aid, doing a tax shift to every citizen in South Dakota to finance any additional kids that come from these homes through the general state aid formula, you're particularly going after the capital outlay fund of every school district, which may be fully or partially inside your district. Take, for instance, T is one of them. That is the fund that by law pays for textbooks. So by what you're designing today is that you're saying that we'll do a 5.2% straight simple interest mortgage for 15 years out of some kid's textbook fund to pay for streets and sidewalks today. So in principle, I have heartburn with it, but principle is a conversation we should have the capital. What's more importantly is, it's flat-out illegal. So, one, when you look at the resolution that was portrayed, it says that this is to support economic development and affordable housing, and this agreement is authorized by South Dakota Codified Law 11-9. However, all of Chapter 11-9, nor will you find the words "economic development," nor will you find the words "affordable housing." So you already have a false statement that your guys are going to sign to. Be worried about that. Two, the codified law says there's only two ways we can do a TIF. It's either blighted area, 25%, or 50% of it will enhance and the general economic welfare of this state through promotion and advancement of industrial, manufacturing, commercial, agriculture, and natural resource development. So, one, because there's a chunk of law that says a open area is blighted, well, that's part of the law. It says an open area that's blighted, and through predominance of obsolete structures, diversity of ownership, or insufficient plating substantially impedes the development of the city, then it's blighted. Dustin Powers called every farmer who owns a productive cornfield a blight upon the state. You really want to be in that situation? So I think blighted isn't quite fair, especially when it's testified that this will be developed, whether it's affordable housing or market rate, it will be developed. So that's out. Two, it has to promote the economic welfare of the state through those five areas. What percentage is zoned for industrial? Zero. What percent is zoned for manufacturing? Zero. What percent is zoned for manufacturing? Zero. So on those fronts, it's illegal. But most importantly, 11-922, 42, says that no TIF funds shall be used for creation of residential structures. Oh, OK, we're going to differentiate, separate those, we're just going to pay for the ground under it. No, it says explicitly in here, we will develop residential housing, affordable housing units. That is a residential structure. Several times you go through and list, these are residential structures, that is the total purpose of the project.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else here to speak on this tonight? All right. Counsel, you got questions for Dustin on this item tonight? Counsel Naitzer?
Dustin, could you bring up your slide and go back to, I think there was two items that were being, and I think it was economic development and something else? It's interesting that that person that testified brought up what he did, because I was kind of looking at this, and I was kind of doing a bit of a thought experiment to my mind when I was reading this. I was reading, as you were talking about this, I guess as I think about this, where I'm struggling is, is it will stimulate by providing accessible housing units, OK, support the economic development in Sioux Falls and finding of enhanced value. One of the improvements, when the improvements, it will significantly enhance the value of substantially all of the property within the district. Based on these two criteria, couldn't I take any greenfield site in the entire city that somebody owns, and if they build anything, I could argue that it qualifies for a TIF based on these two? I don't know what wouldn't qualify for a TIF if these are going to be our rules.
Yeah. I mean, if we think about what tax increment financing has been used for in the state, it's to promote the growth and development of property within the city and the state, and how does that benefit the state of South Dakota? So, you know, I didn't put up here, you know, we're sharing as part of this eligibility that we're focusing this on economic development because we're generating accessible housing units that go to support all of the areas of the state's means by being able to support job growth in the city of Sioux Falls. That's how we're supporting economic development. There is an argument, and it was written in the project plan, which was also referenced, that there is an argument for blight when you look at South Dakota codified law, too. Blight is defined in statute as related to TIF as open areas that haven't been platted and necessarily been sound development. This area's in the city limits, it just hasn't been developed or platted yet. So there is an argument, and there has been previous TIFs and findings on that, and that was why that area was written into law. So it is very broad. You could consider blight, and you could consider economic development for a number of different things. The other piece of this, and what was not mentioned, is that the state has provided, and there was a reference to the school aid formula, which is a whole separate chapter of state law, which is Section 1313, which I did have referenced up there, which identifies using TIF, and if you use TIF and you meet this affordable housing, this criteria, you're considered and classified as an affordable housing TIF. So the state wouldn't put in a criteria to classify TIFs as affordable housing if they weren't justified by using blight or economic development as the definition to create the district.
OK. Well, I certainly am not going to join calling any greenfield that's not platted in the city blight.
Which is why we more justified our argument that it meets the economic development needs of the city of Sioux Falls.
OK. Again, I love the creativity, I'm just struggling with, I have to figure out how I would justify this versus building anything in the city, because anything you could argue is economic development, a house, a video lottery casino, a convenience store. So if I approve this, why wouldn't I approve every developer, anybody in the city that wants to do something on their property? And the other question I do have is, this was two point, what was it, what was the amount of reimbursement potential?
2.14.
OK. So was it 65 units?
65 homes, yep.
So the quick and dirty math was $33,000 a unit basically would be bought down?
Yep.
What about just doing the direct subsidy or a direct buy-down or something like that in a tiered structure and just not messing with TIF at all?
Well, I can't speak to why we're not using TIF on this. I mean, if we wanted to use other city funds to directly buy down the cost of the housing prices, that's a whole other consideration.
Well, we already do with some housing where we do like, you know, 20,000 silent loans and things. I mean, so...
This is just another tool in the toolbox that was recommended by the Ahab Board, and ultimately on how we can create more accessible housing units in Sioux Falls. It's not the solve-all, it's not going to fix all the housing needs, it's not going to address the really low income, it's not going to address certain different levels of it. It's a tool we have to be able to stimulate some more accessible housing units in Sioux Falls. And so, you know, this is the concept that is being brought forward at this time.
Thank you.
Other questions for this? Counsel Starr?
Yes. Dustin, would you swing back to the, I think Mr. DeYoung had the part with the cost of the program where it had the cost to the county and the school districts? There you go. This is money that's being taken away from the county and taken away from the school districts rather than given to them as part of the, what we're projecting the annual cost of the program is, correct?
This money during the life of the TIF district will be used to pay down the TIF district. Once the TIF district's dissolved, this money will be going to those entities above. You know, what we're laying out here, though, is we're using tax increment financing to support accessible housing units. If our goal is not to develop accessible housing units, this area would be developed as market-rate houses, and these tax dollars would just be sent to those taxing entities as normal. But if our goal is to create accessible housing units and use TIF as the tool to get there, this is the, you know, really the decision that's being asked to be made.
No, and as part of this process, you met with the county, and you met with the school, and they were on board. They don't have to be on board, but they agree that housing is important.
The county and the school district don't necessarily make a formal decision. We did present to Minnehaw County on September 20th and presented this to them. We did ask the Brandon Valley School District whether or not they wanted a presentation. They didn't need one. But again, the school districts typically, they'll get made whole no matter what, if their budget requires them to get made whole. They'll get made whole through the different formulas, through the state aid to education, so.
Exactly. The state will pay for their portion that they would lose as part of this project, so it's a cost to state taxpayers.
They have to justify that based on budget to be able to get it.
Yep, I'm there. Did you have an overall map of the area, other than the, yeah, thank you. Where's the closest parks? And that's probably a Director Kearney question, and I apologize for stretching that, but I mean, we have a goal of having parks within a certain amount of area, and this is a new part of town, so we're, because again, you're not going to play in your backyard if you have kids as part of this. I mean, that's part of squeezing down the cost of land. So where would be the closest park that you would take your kids to or your family as part of this development?
Yeah, I guess I don't know that right off the top of my head.
Can you check for next week?
Yep, I'll bring it up next week.
I'd appreciate that. And then, then probably at the same time, the place, the closest place for school, because transportation is, at this point, you're not walking to school or you're not doing that. So when you have a working family that it's going to take to qualify for these houses, so how you get across Highway 11, I believe there's a tunnel not too far, and I think Brandon School District has a school planned in the area, so it'd be nice to have a, we keep approving some of the zoning changes, but we're not looking at the infrastructure that it takes to support the housing that we keep approving, or approving. So it'd be nice, as we do these, to say, hey, the infrastructure's in place for kids to go to school, that we're not overtaxing a current school and doing some of those. And that's outside of this TIF discussion, but it's part of the overall growth of what we're trying to do. The other thing that I wanted to do is, give me an income level for a family of four, two parents, two kids, that it would take, what would their income have to be to meet the minimum requirements of South Dakota housing?
To achieve the purchasing...
To be able to purchase one of these homes. And I know that's a range, and I mean, it's kind of a chart and a sliding thing, but I tried this during the informational, and I didn't get very far, but...
Yeah, that may be something I don't have off the top of my head either. Can I...
Nope, next week would be fine. I'm trying to figure out who we're trying to help, you know, and I get that it's 80% of the AMI or 100% of the AMI or 100%, up to 100% of requirements for South Dakota housing, but I'm trying to figure out who that is. You know, do they, we know it's not going to be two people, you know, parents who are both working at Amazon because they're going to be below 80% of the AMI and qualify for more subsidies than this. Is this going to be people who are working in manufacturing, or are they teachers, are they, you know? Give me a, give me the income, and I'll match it up to what average incomes are for people who work in our community. Would one of our police officers make enough money with a spouse and a couple of kids to qualify for this? And that seems to be our issue with affordable housing right now, is that people are making too much to qualify because we haven't adjusted the rates, and sometimes they don't make enough to qualify and trying to find that range. So I'm trying to figure out how this project fits into who we're trying to help. I'd appreciate that.
Yep.
Other questions? Counsel Sale?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to remind those in the audience watching at home, the first reading that comes before a council, we debate only whether or not it gets a second reading. The substantive debate on the issue happens at second reading. Just wanted to remind those people at home.
All right, thank you.
With that, I move to approval.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Sale, seconded by Jensen. Set a data second reading for Monday, the 17th of October. Discussion on the motion. Counsel Baranco?
I agree that we do have some more investigation, some conversation should take place, but I completely agree with Counselor Sale that there's another forum, and we have some more time available to have that conversation, so I'm planning to vote in favor of the motion.
All right. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurus?
Yes.
Naitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Item 14, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a first amended and restated facilities management agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and ASM Global Arena Management LLC for the management of the Denny Sanford Premier Center, the Sioux Falls Arena, the Sioux Falls Convention Center, and the Sioux Falls Baseball Stadium. Sponsor, Mayor.
Hey, Sean.
Sean Pritchett, again. Finance Director, also serve as contract administrator for the Event Center campus. Two agreements that'll be coming for you this evening. We did cover these at length at the informational last week, so I will try not to relay all of that information again, but for the benefit of the public that may be viewing this city council meeting here tonight, did want to highlight some of the main factors of these agreements as they're being brought forward for their five-year extensions on them. Again, just a brief history, ASM Global, which formerly, or you may be used to having them be referred to as SMG, had merged with AEG to become ASM Global a couple of years ago, but they've been on board with us since the opening of the Event Center back in 2014. Primarily, they oversee all operations, maintenance, bookings of the Event Center... Primarily, they oversee all operations, maintenance, bookings of the Event Center campus, which includes the arena, convention center, and the premier center. It was last renewed back in 2018, and in that agreement included the option for a five-year extension. They do partner with Spectra or Ovations, which we'll be speaking about in the next agenda item, who provide food and beverage operator, and as I noted in the informational, this is a fairly unique structure related to other facilities across the nation where we have a different facility manager or, as well as a different food and beverage operator, but it works very effectively for our community and for these venues. We did add the Sioux Falls Baseball Stadium as part of the agreement in 2018 in terms of operations and maintenance, and we removed the Orpheum Theater in 2019 when the, when the management of that particular building was moved to the Washington Pavilion. In terms of the major non-economic changes that are being proposed in this agreement, obviously, we are updating the name from SMG to ASM Global, we removed any references to the Orpheum. The previous agreement had provisions in there related to the, if we decided to cease use of both the arena and the Orpheum, we obviously removed the Orpheum, but we did add the stadium. We increased the responsibility for RMM, paid for by ASM Global through our operating accounts from twenty-five hundred to five thousand, just based on inflation and the type of expenses that are incurred, and then anything above five thousand would be paid through, directly by the city through the entertainment tax. We allowed for administrative approvals to occur by email, just updating that to allow for electronic approvals of many items that we work on on a regular basis, eliminated the capital contribution in this agreement, and updated the insurance provision to eliminate the forty-five day requirement, decreasing that to fifteen days or fewer, but not less than one business day with administrative approval. The major changes and the ones that we discussed at length a week ago relates to compensation, and I would say overall, we had certain objectives that we were looking to achieve as part of this renewed agreement, as did ASM Global. But some of the major changes in the previous agreement, our base fee was about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. In the last year, we reduced that down to seventy-five thousand. We focused greatly on increase the amount of qualitative and incentive fees that we would be, that would be available in order to incentivize revenue growth and hopefully additional profitability. We doubled the qualitative incentive fee to fifty thousand dollars. This is the portion that's discretionary to the city to assign each year. We base it on things that aren't necessarily quantitative, but things like how well are you taking care of our building, what do our customers feel about their experiences at the Event Center, surveys, how are we comparing to other facilities of similar nature across the nation? So we did increase this to fifty thousand, but also put a carve-out in there for the, allows them to earn, the opportunity to earn a portion of that and make it less discretionary based on the number of shows that they would book in the top thirty nationally, based on Polestar ratings. We introduced tiers, or different tiers in terms of the incentive, over a ten million dollars in total revenue, I'll talk about that here on the next slide. We retained a maximum compensation, which is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in totality. We added a reduction factor that reduces the incentive fees if we go below nine hundred thousand in profitability, that's a dollar-for-dollar reduction of those incentive fees, and that's to help protect the fact that we don't pay additional incentive fees in lieu of our profitability. We added a revenue credit option that we talked about last week. Sometimes because we incentivize based on revenue, we want to maximize the revenue and net profitability performance of these facilities. There are times when we do have to make, be able to discount the cost of room rentals, particularly for large conferences or large type of events that we're trying to attract to our community. There's kind of a disincentive when you're basing everything based on revenues, especially when these are events might have high impact. They don't occur regularly, maybe once a year, once every couple of years, but when those do come around, we want to be able to provide this revenue credit that appears that would allow them not to be disincentivized based on revenues, but would also allow us to be able to be competitive in attracting those events to our community. And then lastly, we include three percent cost escalators throughout the five-year period of the contract. You see the three tiers, so in terms of the base fee, it's seventy-five thousand, just base, and again, that's about half of where we were previously. The qualitative fee was increased from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand across the board, and then the incentive fee is structured, so anything above ten million, if they earn between ten and twelve and a half million in gross revenues, it's two and a half percent is retained as an incentive fee. Between twelve and a half and fifteen million, three percent is retained. Above fifteen million, which is really a stretch goal, is three and a half percent for totality, they would max out at seventeen and a half million dollars in revenues. By virtue of just history, ASM has averaged about thirteen, thirteen point two million dollars in revenue at the complex pre-COVID. Over that time period, we accumulated a cash balance of about five and a half million dollars before COVID. We did take a hit down to two point nine, nine million dollars during COVID, but we look to rebuild that, we should be over five million dollars by the end of this year. Twenty, twenty twenty-two has been good and looks to be about similar to where we were in 2019, potentially, which was a record year. You can see from this slide, the next slide, just some examples of what compensation would look like in a given year, and as I said, thirteen point two million was our average pre-COVID, so you can see they're averaging in that one point six percent. Really focused on that blended rate, what was the total rate that we were paying relative to gross revenues that we were at? We were averaging about one point three percent for many of those years before COVID. We're going to hit about one point six percent based on the structure that we have for this year, and the last year of the agreement. But then we stretched that a little bit and incentivized the opportunities to continue to grow revenues and profitability, diversification for our overall impact for that Event Center campus. Lastly, I'll leave you with this, and these are the goals and objectives that we came into the agreement looking to support and that we believe we were able to achieve by building an agreement that is structured to help incentivize and maximize these goals, and that they include show and entertainment diversification, utilizing incentivized incentives to maximize revenues as well as net profit opportunities, because we know if we generate additional net profits, that reduces the expense and cost to the taxpayers and provides an opportunity for the operations to be more self-supporting and provide opportunities for some of those capital needs that we're going to need in the years ahead. We ensure that the facilities, we want to make sure that they're well-maintained, and we want a contract that helps support and incentivize that, and to ensure there's opportunity for community benefit, which is why we included the revenue credit option as part of this agreement. We want management stability and continuity, there are very few players within this market. In fact, the two players are OBG, which is Ovations, and ASM Global are the two primary events, these type of large event center management, management companies that are currently in the marketplace. We also want to maximize our opportunity to rebound from the pandemic impacts, which were pretty significant for not just us, but across the industry. And finally, just be responsive to the state of the industry, knowing that it is, has changed in a post-COVID environment, and how do we restructure ourselves in the way we incentivize our management agreements to hopefully incentivize our managers to continue to provide excellent shows and excellent service here in our community? And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
All right, Sean, thank you. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight?
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. I'm going to speak on fourteen and fifteen, since they're, since what I'm going to talk about actually applies to both of them, so just keep that in mind when I'm up here. And I'll try to be substantive. Anyway, I found it interesting, this morning I went to go look at the agenda and I saw this on there, these, the fourteen and fifteen, the renewals of the contracts, and then I noticed that there was a, a meeting on Thursday, coming on Thursday of the audit meeting. And in the audit meeting, they did some follow-ups for audits of these two facilities, and there was no links. I couldn't, I couldn't read the audits, and I thought, well, that would be really nice to read these audits and see what they found before the first reading tonight, or the resolution, it's not a first reading, it's just going to pass tonight. And didn't find any, there was nothing there. So then, before I left the house about five-thirty, I noticed that the audits were up, and they appeared. So sometime this afternoon, the audits magically appeared up on the city website. Wouldn't it have been nice to have this information, I don't know, a week ago, before these contracts? You had the information, you had it, the audits are done, this was follow-up on the audits, and what you chose to do is hide the information until a couple hours before the meeting, before you approved these contracts. Now, I read the audits, I didn't see anything in there very drastic, but it would be, it would be nice to have that information before you voted on it, you guys probably had the information, but the public never had the information. And I'm not sure why we need to hold information all the time, we, we do this a lot, where we, we wait till a couple minutes before the meeting, and then all of a sudden magically all this, all this stuff appears up on the website. Hiding somewhere until a couple minutes before the meeting. Anyway, as for the contracts, I really don't understand the structure and the commissions and everything else. What I've often thought about when it comes to the Event Center or that facility out there is, we should be having contracts with management companies that give the best deal for the citizens. I remind people, we are paying, I think, a ten million dollar bond payment every year on that facility. That's not coming from the management company, that's not coming from the artists, the promoters, it's coming out of the taxpayer's pocket, whether I go to that facility or not, I have to pay that bond payment. We need to find a way to generate way more revenue out of that facility to go to us to help pay down those bonds. I can tell you, there's a lot of people that don't go to shows there. The main reason they'll tell you is, one friend tells me, goes, I'm not paying nine dollars for a Bud Light, but a hundred and fifty dollar tickets for nosebleed seats, it just doesn't appeal to people, but we're still paying for it. One thing that I suggested when the place opened is a five dollar bond ticket fee on there. Other cities do it, they call it a parking fee, they, they get creative with the name. We could call it whatever we want. Now, it's been said that they don't want that, but it's not up to them, it's not up to the management company to decide whether or not they want that or not. It doesn't hurt them, they will make the same amount of money, the promoters will make the same amount of money, the artists will make the same amount of money, it's a five dollar extra fee on the ticket that the consumer pays for out of their pocket when they go buy a ticket to go to see a show. And I can guarantee you, if they're spending a hundred and fifty dollars for a ticket and nine dollar Bud Lights, that five dollars is not going to faze them, they're just going to go, it's an extra fee. And you guys have the power to make that and put that in ordinance without their approval or without their consent, you don't even have to have it in this contract. You can simply have an ordinance that says, we are going to be charging five dollars for every ticket that is sold at the Premier Center until the bonds are paid for, or paid off. Now, it's not going to generate ten million dollars a year, I, I know that, but it's going to put a dent in it. And it's start, it's time for us to start looking out for the citizens and our investments and not the management companies that are making money from this facility. I want you to think about that.
All right, anyone else here to speak on this tonight? All right, Council, questions for Sean here tonight?
Move approval, Sale.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Councilor Sale, seconded by Jensen, discussion on the motion. All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
McCurris?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero, next item, please.
Item fifteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Ovations Food Services LP, formerly known as Spectra Food Services and Hospitality, for the food and beverage services of the Denny Sanford Premier Center, the Sioux Falls Arena, and the Sioux Falls Convention Center. Sponsor, Mayor.
Sean?
Yes, so this is the second agreement related to the Event Center, so this is the food and beverage contract with Ovations, previously known as Spectra. This also was covered at the informational, so we will just do a brief presentation on this, and then be happy to answer any follow-up questions you might have had since that presentation. So they have been the food service provider for our Convention Center dating back to two thousand and seven, they do provide all food and beverage services for the Event Center campus, which includes the arena, Convention Center, and Premier Center, they do not provide at the stadium, the stadium is, that food service is provided internally by the, by the Lee C. or the Canaries. It was last renewed with a five-year term back in 2018. We did remove and amend it to remove the Orpheum Theater in 2019 when the Pavilion took over, similar to ASM Global. The structure of this is a little bit separately, by virtue of our contract with ASM Global, they serve as the direct contract administrator for Ovations because they oversee the entirety of the facility. As mentioned in the informational, we do work very closely with Chad Stoner and the rest of his management group over there, meeting with them regularly and talking at least monthly, sometimes several more times than that. Overall, just, again, we showed this during the informational, but this shows the revenue history, so this contract is different in that we don't pay in a fee for their services, but rather, we share commissions from what they're providing. And so, basically, the better that they perform, the better that the city will perform. Before COVID, we were generating about three and a half million dollars in commissions from this. These are run through our ASM Global accounts that are held on behalf of the city, much like the public facility ticket fees that we do charge at the Event Center campus. You can see that we did rebound as we were coming back from COVID there in 2021 and going into 2022, based on where we were performing in August, looking like we'll be very close to where we were in 2019, hopefully even better. Again, there wasn't a great deal of substantive changes related to this agreement, we did update the name from Spectra to Ovations as they merged with OBG Group. We dropped any references to the Orpheum, as well as the Sioux Falls Baseball Stadium, updated the insurance provision for that forty-five day requirement, similar to what we did for ASM Global, making this a standard for most of our management agreements going forward. We, Ovations, as part of this agreement renewal, is bringing forward a capital contribution, they are doubling it from three hundred thousand of what it was in the last agreement, they will be providing six hundred thousand over the next several years in terms of enhancements and improvements primarily related to various items, we talked about at the informational, but it will be about refreshing various concession stands at the Premier Center, updating various beverage carts, things of that nature, really trying to keep it as a first-class facility. And then we define the management charge and excluded that from commissions, so does reduce some of the revenues in which we can charge commissions on, but in lieu of that, that was based on the fact of the additional capital contribution, as well as the fact that they would be delegating these funds directly to improving the wages of their non-tipped employees. With a tight labor market, they are challenged like many else, and we know that the stability that they have in continuity of their labor is directly related to the services that they can provide. The revenue share here did not change at all from the previous agreement, the tiers, as the tiers go up in certain functions of what food services they provide, the commissions that we do receive increases. Well, they were not, the tiers were not adjusted based on inflation at all, that is to the benefit of the city. Finally, overall goals and objectives for the, as we went into these agreements and this renegotiated agreement, the first three really being together in terms of really wanting to make sure we modernize and refresh our food and menu options, that we stay current with industry expect, industry trends as well as customer expectations. Part of that is the capital contribution that they're bringing forward, as well as the significant investments that they've made in technology here over the last several years. And finally, just investing in employee retention and staffing excellence continuing to be critical to their success. We know this as a city, that, that staffing continuity and experience is, is important, and we look to help and to partner with our management entities to be able to support that goal and objective as well. In closing, I did note last week and thanked Scott Rust, our Purchasing Manager, Tom Huber, our Assistant Finance Director, who are highly involved in the renegotiations of these agreements. I also want to give a point out to Karen Leonard, who is within our attorney's office as well, she's been exceptionally helpful in working through these agreements, our go-to person, she has a lot of history in working with these agreements, and have appreciated the opportunity to continue working with her to get these renewed, and with that, I'll answer any questions you have.
All right, thank you, Sean. Anyone from the public here to speak on item fifteen? Council, any questions for Sean on this one? Counselor, I'm, Councilor Selberg first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like, what are some of the food enhancements and technological advancements and things that we'll be looking forward to, that you just touched on on that last page?
Yep, so one of the things they did primarily during the COVID timeframe, too, is they enhanced all of their customer service and, and all the systems are utilized for payments, and so we did go cashless, which did improve the speed and, and the speed that we're able to move people through lines. I know not everybody is a fan of a cashless system, but it's definitely like clear bags, the industry trend, and so it's the direction that we went in, and overall, it has helped improve the wait times for people, but in addition to that, it improves the per caps that we receive because it's moving people through lines quicker and they're more likely to, to have more food and beverage if it's more accessible and easier to utilize. Some of the improvements that they plan to utilize some of the capital funds for is to refresh a couple of the concession stands, so they, they've looked at some different concepts, like taking one of them and turning it into more of a Tex-Mex type of, so you're getting a more diversified food product, people are looking for healthier options, but they're also looking for more interesting options and not just fried foods and so forth, so. So looking to really address some of those industry trends and customer expectations. They are also redoing a lot of the drink carts, things of that nature, to really make them look a little bit higher-end and really enhance the experience that people have when they're out there. They're also going to be investing a lot in small wares and things that are used at the convention center that are utilized for caterings and things of that nature.
Interesting, thank you.
Other questions here? All right, Counsel Jensen, take that motion.
Move approval, Jensen.
All right.
Second, Cole.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Cole to approve item 15. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Counsel members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 16, please.
A resolution approving the release of the water main easement located in Track Three, sure-slicked addition to the City of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, as shown on Exhibit A, Private Applicant Sherrappa Place LLC.
Evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Brian Wilcox, representing Public Works this evening. The easement is, Water Main Easement is located on Sherrappa Downtown Site Development. This drawing here kind of shows the area on the left was a, in gray shaded, is a new water main and water main easement that was installed and recorded earlier this year. The yellow shaded area is the old water main easement that, to be released this evening. All utility companies were notified, no conflicts within the easement to be released. Engineering requests your support and approval to release the water main easement.
All right, thanks, Brian. Anyone from the public here to speak on 16? Counsel, you got any questions on this one? Take a motion.
Move approval.
Second, Knightzert.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Knightzert. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Counsel members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 17, a resolution approving the release of part of the floodway easement located in Lot Two and Three of Track Two, Greenfield River Ridge, addition to the City of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, as shown on Exhibit A, Private Applicant Rogue Holdings LLC.
This floodway easement area is located by 26th and Southeastern, by the River Ridge Surgical property. So to the right of their property, that yellow hatched area, there was a regional BMP pond that was constructed in '22 that kind of captured a lot of the overflow stream from, for the drainage that came across this property. And so the outfall structure was shifted to the north onto the city property, which, you know, the floodway easement that was shown here to be released this evening, no longer gets impacted with drainage running through that area. The property owners requesting to expand their parking lot and do some site improvements. Our drainage team has reviewed the request to release this floodway easement and is in support. All utility companies have been notified and no conflicts within this floodway easement.
All right, thanks, Brian. Anyone from the public here to speak on 17? Any questions here, counsel?
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve 17. Discussion on that? All right, let's vote, please.
Counsel members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 18, a resolution vacating a part of county auditor's lot H1, located within the north 400 feet of the south, 450 feet of the east, 1,075.9 feet of the southeast quarter of Section 35 Township 101 North, range 49 west of the 5th PM, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, as shown on Exhibit A. Recommendation, set a date of hearing for Tuesday, November 8, 2022, Private Applicants Rawning Real Estate LLC.
Thank you, Denise. This H lot is located near 57th and Sycamore in some Rawning's undeveloped property. This H lot was dedicated back in the 50s for future improvements to Sycamore Avenue. 2007, the old section line right away of Sycamore was vacated, and as you can see, Sycamore Avenue has been realigned, shifting further to the east. Again, the developer, Rawning, has requested to vacate this H lot to remove any encumbrances with future development. Engineering requests your support to move this forward and set the date of hearing for November 8.
All right, thanks, Brian. All right, anyone from the public here to speak on 18? Counsel, any questions on this one? All right, look for a motion to set a date of hearing for Tuesday, November 8.
Move approval, Baranco.
Second, Knightzert.
All right, motion by Baranco, seconded by Knightzert. Discussion there? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Counsel members, Baranco.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
McCurus.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Counsel, we got any new business tonight to cover? All right, move to public input on items we didn't talk about tonight. Three minutes per person. Anyone here for public input?
Good evening, Chester DeYoung, Sioux Falls. In 2009-10, when the city proposed the construction of Grant Street from Foss Avenue to where it currently stops, they had two major points that they said were going to happen. The first one is where the climbing wall is at. That was going to be a commercial building, and that's okay, climbing wall, commercial. Where the problem is, is they promised that they would have direct access to Arrowhead Parkway, East 12th Street at the time. That does not exist. That's causing them some major problems. Second, you know, with, when you turn around, you didn't have that access, all of the traffic from this climbing wall is going to wind up on Grant Street. Grant Street is a residential street, or it was supposed to be, because it was going to be Villas. And then what did the city do? They changed it with shapes and places and doubled the occupancy from 100 units to 200. Wait a second, that's their second problem. They have had two things they said were going to happen in 2009-10. The city changed it. In fact, when they changed the zoning, they didn't even let the property owners know they were doing it. Remember, my folks own the property on the south side of Grant since the 70s and 80s. I've owned mine since 1994. We always felt Grant Street would go through. However, it had to meet all current city's codes and standards. It is in violation of all kinds of them, and they're still trying to force this road through with my meeting Andy today. The city implemented shapes and places on April 16, 2014. It set new standards on the number of residential units, the building sizes, number of parking spaces allowed, transitions between residential and multifamily neighborhoods, buffer zones. I'm sure that when the city implemented all this, they forgot about my neighborhood. In fact, it took Mr. Hubie four months to figure it out, and then he said, oh, we got a problem here, help us out, help us out. No. Okay. Similarly, when they vacated Taylor Street and Marquette Avenue in 2010, they vacated all of the city utility easements. I have 390 feet under sewer easement under my property. Thank you, you're going to pay me for that. You also have no access across Marquette Avenue, so that when they go to build that apartment complex, they've got to loop their gas main and their power. And guess what? They have no way across there without visiting with me. The city feels they are above their own rules. Finally, oh, I like this one. When they approved the sand volleyball courts, you know, you've got five courts and three parking spots. Oh, a year after operation, we changed everything, that'll never happen again. But in the meantime, everybody gets to do it, whatever they want. You know, it's a problem. This is just three cases the city's screwing up. They think they're above their own rules. The city screwed it up, the city should fix it, and this neighborhood should not have to deal with all the traffic from it. They caused it. If it would have been Villas, there wouldn't have been any issue. You guys have a great night.
Okay, anyone else here tonight?
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. Mr. DeYoung brings up shape places. What an interesting piece of legislation that was. But what a lot of people don't understand is it can be amended at any time. I was watching the Rotary today, it was yesterday, former City Councilor Christine Erickson was talking about all these backroom meetings and stuff that they were having in January over Holstone Foods. I don't know if the citizens know this, but the city council and the city has claimed that they cannot do anything to stop Holstone. Well, now you can't, after the judge ruling today and some other stuff that, once the petitions were taken out. But back in January, you could have, you could have amended shape places, you could have went back to conditional uses. It was always my problem with shape places, there's many great things in that thing, but the conditional use should have stayed, because you have to ask yourself, where is the water going to come from? And that could have been a part of the conditional use. You guys had the power to stop Holstone, or at least limit them in a certain way. Well, some of you weren't up there yet, you got elected after the fact. But I don't want citizens to be fooled to think that the council didn't have the power to do it. They had the power to do it. They had the power to change the zoning ordinances and stop Holstone. I've said there's three things that need to happen in this city to make it really move forward. And if one of these things happened, it would be great. I don't think any of them are going to happen, because we always hear excuses when anybody brings them up. Close Smithfield, have 18th Street extend through the golf courses over to the mall area, and move the railroad tracks out of downtown. You would accomplish those three things, you would see so much economic development, it wouldn't even be funny. And we wouldn't have to worry about bringing a packing plant to town. On a different subject that I got shut down today at the informational, I was looking at this pavilion's annual report. They have $5.2 million in their savings account. Why does a management company have $5.2 million sitting in their savings account, and we subsidize them millions each year?